Thank you.
Okay, Jared.
And we are live.
Okay, we're on call meeting to order. We're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance and then followed by moment of silence. So sorry to ask you to stand wherever you're located and please work with us through the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic.
One nation.
Of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moment of silence. Thank you. We're all called, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Boe?
Here.
All present.
Just a reminder to people, please mute your mics except when you're going to be speaking so that will keep our feedback noise down in the background. First thing tonight, we have some recognitions and ceremonial proclamations. We have three retirements. Annette Grellow, who worked in our area agency on aging for many years, Courtney Staley, who was part of our sheriff's department, and Kathleen Elizabeth Washrow, who worked in our corrections department. I'll send them a letter of congratulations and wish them good health in their retirement. Any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
Some moves. Linda Houck?
Second. Walter?
Second.
Okay. Well, a motion, Ms. Houck, and second by Mr. Griffith on the question. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. The next two motions are the ones we've been using since we went to the virtual meetings. The first motion is to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement for majority of those participating in a meeting must be physically present. Do we have a motion?
Some moves.
Some moves. Linda?
Second, Kendra.
Mr. Urban, Ms. Houck? On the question, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. The second one again is the suspension of the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the manager's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Sheila, motion?
Sheila, we have a second.
Second, Urban.
Good. On the question, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. We're now a public comment on agenda items only. Do we have anyone from the public?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Rayvo from Hazelton.
Okay, Mark. You've got three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the agenda items, the first thing is the capital budget. As far as the capital budget, I spoke during the budget hearings last year about the Udag money currently sitting in the Office of Community Development account as a carry forward line item for the 911 digital upgrade for the portables and receivers, you know, for their purchase for the municipalities. And as a member of the redevelopment, County Redevelopment Authority, last week, there was a meeting regarding this Udag money, and it was basically to satisfy a mortgage payment. So I asked the question of Mr. Riley as far as under whose purview that money is, you know, for the Udag money it's under, and he said that it's under the county's purview as per what they want to, it's at their discretion as to what they wish to allocate the money for with the permission of HUD. And I suggested that the money be used for either the portables and receivers, for the municipalities, for the 911 upgrades, if those, for the municipalities that are short for those equipment needs. However, since the COVID crisis has afflicted and decimated so many small businesses, it might be a good idea to help them get back on their feet by using the Udag money as to offset for any kind of, you know, like as a loan to small businesses, to low and moderate income areas to get them back on their feet again to stabilize the tax base. And I was wondering if the council and the county manager can direct the Office of Community Development to look into that. Pertaining to the letter to Governor Wolf, I think that this letter
was a study. You know, the Udag money is not part of the capital plan. Go ahead, Governor Wolf.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I realize that, Mr. Chairman. I just thought that they would be suggestions to look into. Now, the governor, the letter to the governor.
We're only looking at agenda items.
Oh, I thought that was part of the agenda for this. It was on the list on the agenda.
Not part of the capital plan. The letter, please, you have only a couple clicks left there. So please, the letter to the governor.
Okay, okay. The letter, as far as preventing, so the study showed today that was released by French medical researchers showing antibodies preventing reinfection from areas that were already infected. So I think a second closure of our county would be unwarranted and unjustified, you know, for that instance. So if the governor wished to re, you know, reimpose the closure, I don't think he would be able to since there would be no reason for that. I would also like, yeah, I would like to remind you, Mr. Chairman, as far as the areas that were infected, that you could use the money as far as if there is a second wave for relocation for people that can't effectively sell themselves.
That's not part of the agenda right now, Mr. Rayvo. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to speak in regards to agenda items? Please. Okay, hearing none. We're moving down to the person.
Brian Shiner, Kingston?
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
Yeah, sorry about the delay here. I realize that this is a difficult, this is a difficult time to have these meetings and trying to work through this new technology and so on. But when I left for work this morning, the website indicated that the letter to the governor was going to be a handout, which obviously can't be, and the access code for the conference was the same as the last meeting. Now I go to call in and I see that it's been changed. So I was in a dead conference, and the handout has now been put up on the website, I guess, sometime today. But again, I'm at work, so I don't have the ability to just look at a computer. So I think if we're going to work together on this, we need to get some of these things done a little bit in advance, like at least maybe the day before.
Well, it would have probably been done if we had Mondays a regular day, but unfortunately it was all day.
Then in that case, Friday. Not a criticism, just a comment. That's all.
Wow. And that's fair. Anyone else?
Thank you.
No problem. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Okay. Try to move down to number one again. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 12 meeting?
Some moves, Sheila.
Okay. Do I have a second for Ms. Saban?
Second, Kendra.
Very good. On the motion? We're all called. No. On the motion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No.
Mr. Urban, any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Moving over to the next page, number two, ordinance for adoption of the 2021 long range operational fiscal and capital plan for Luzerne County.
You skipped old business, Mr. McGinley.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry. Mr. Griffith, go ahead. Do you have old business, please?
Yeah, I do. I sent several emails over the past two weeks to the county manager and didn't get responses. So I guess my procedure from now on will be, anything under old business will be emails that weren't answered by the manager. So I think if the manager's on, is he on the conference or?
The manager accepted. I think he's on.
I'm here.
Okay.
Yes, he is on. There you go.
Okay. So I got quite a few, well, probably about five emails or so that I sent that I didn't get an email response. And I know he's been pretty busy with the election and all the other things. So normally, I get answers pretty quickly. So I just wanted to know about the, first of all, I sent a request for a written memo regarding the opinion that was the county paid for the, on the stormwater fee. And if he could instruct the Office of Law to send that to members of council so we could see what the memo was that we paid the, for 650 hours for, that would be helpful. May 18, I sent an email asking for a copy of the rental agreements for the polling places, if we have any of those rental agreements, because I noticed there was a RFP sent out for cleaning the polling places, most of which are schools. So I wanted to know what the rental agreement states, why we have to clean the schools when we pay tax dollars to the school districts. The other email I sent was the number of cell phones that are in the Bureau of Elections office. I wanted to know how many cell phones are there, because I've requested a couple of times that we've have, I've gotten a lot of people that are calling saying that they can't get through to the Board of Elections, the Bureau of Elections. And so I thought maybe it would be better for us to put the cell phone number out. And I haven't gotten the answer for that inquiry. The last, the other question I had sent to the manager is the Dominion charge for the ballot that was printed either in error or if it was the template, what was that cost that we may incur to get back? I sent that email out. And let me see if I have another, oh, was there a letter sent to the tax collectors? That was a letter that we, we said was going to be sent out, I think Wednesday or Thursday, but we didn't get confirmation back as to whether that actually happened. And the last question I have for the manager, for the manager or for the Office of Law is the oath of office. I know Mr. Urban asked about this back in January or February, and I still, I go out there and I look, and I still don't see some oaths of offices for some members of council members as well as Board of Elections members. There's a lot of oaths of offices that aren't filed in a prathonitaries office, and I'd like to get an update on what the situation is with those items as well. So if you could answer any of those for me, I'd be appreciative.
Sure. Let me just take them down here. The stormwater opinion is the first one? Yeah, I mean, whatever.
If I may.
Please feel free to meet with council and take whatever steps you deem necessary to meet with council, go over that.
If I may, just, I will respond to that right now. I was hoping that perhaps we could set up some sort of executive session, but technologically, that might be tricky. So, and I don't want to discuss what was previously discussed in the executive session prior to the attorney's presentation, but you will, Mr. Griffith and council will have access to the report, and I will send that in a confidential email to council.
What was the second one? I got the third one, Walter, but I.
Well, the rental agreements for the polling places, Dave?
Rental agreements. I don't have those online. I don't think there were rental agreements for the new, the new schools.
So is there any reason why we're doing an RFP to clean them if we don't know for sure that we have to do that?
Because that was the, when we asked the schools to be utilized them, we said that we would clean them.
But, but don't, doesn't the taxpayers already pay for a janitorial service in the schools?
Um, I don't think the type of janitorial services that are going to be needed in order to do this. So we asked the schools in order to step up and have us utilize the polling places and open their doors up to a large number of people who were potentially infected with COVID at some point or another. And we said that we would clean it.
Will that, will we be eligible to get reimbursed for that, Dave?
Correct.
Okay. So that, so that the RFP, the other question on the RFP was, it's dated June 3 to June 13, I believe, on the RFP, and we're obviously voting there. Are they going to clean after we're done there on the 3rd to the 13th?
I think they're, they're going to be cleaning between the 3rd to the 13th.
Okay, okay. Go ahead. And then next question was the cell phones for the Bureau of Elections.
There are, there are no cell phones in the, in the Elections Bureau. The money that you said $400 was paid, that's for the tablets that they use for the rovers.
Oh, okay. That's for the cell phones for the rovers, then?
They're not, they're not, they're not cell phones for rovers. They're like the tablets.
So we're paying that every month?
I don't know. I don't know what that.
When I look in New World, there's a, there's a fee every month for $400 for telephones and internet.
My understanding is that's for the, that's for the, that's for the Rover's tablets.
Okay. Okay. So no, so, so nobody else has a cell phone in the office, then?
There's no cell phones and there's no county-owned cell phones in the Elections Bureau.
Okay. The other one was Dominion charge for the tablet or for the ballot template that we had an issue with?
I don't have that one. I missed that email. So let me run that down.
Okay. And the other one was the letter sent to the tax collector?
That's on, Mr. Swett, are you on this call?
I can speak to that. I can speak to that. The letters, letters were sent to the tax collectors with a copy of the executed resolution, I mean, excuse me, ordinance, and the, a letter was also sent to the municipalities as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. And then the last one is the oath of offices. I'm sure probably Ramilda probably could answer that one as well. Did we address that at all yet?
We started to address it. You're right. We did start to address it, and we did find, I did find oaths of office in the prathonitaries office filed. Some of them were filed to the same number. I will, I will gather the information of the oaths that I did retrieve, and then either you or Councilman Urban can tell me the ones that you believe are outstanding, and I will do an additional search.
Yeah, because I didn't see any for oath of offices for the folks that are sworn in as board members to the Board of Elections and those. Are they're filed in the prathonitaries office as well, are they not?
The oaths would be filed in the prathonitaries office.
Yeah, I didn't see any oaths for anybody that's on a board authority or commission other than the arena board. But I'll run those down and I'll get that list to you. If you could check that out, that'd be great.
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's all I have, Mr. McGinley. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll move over to the ordinance adopting the 2021 long range operational fiscal and capital plan for Luzerne County. And as noted there, it's being introduced tonight by the county manager, and council would now have the authorization or the responsibility to review, edit, change, whatever, going forward. But we must have it completed and approved by September 1. So County Manager Pedri?
Thanks. I'm going to turn this over pretty quickly to Eddie and Larry, who know the projects more than, more than we do. But obviously, in this time of COVID right now, we have some major budgetary concerns. Us, like every other municipality out there, is looking at our numbers very, very closely and making sure we have enough funding to go through. We've been watching this capital fund very, very closely over the past few years. Obviously, council's been approving this every year. This year's projects are really, we only brought them down to three projects that have emergency-type issues. The first would be Penn Place Windows. In the third floor of the Penn Place Windows, there is a large amount of drainage and issues, so much so that it's causing, you know, some molding issues as well as other things that we have to have those addressed. The second thing would be the lights on the Cross Valley Expressway. Believe it or not, in 1975, the county agreed to take care of the lights on the Cross Valley Expressway. The state reimburses us for half of the bills for those, but a lot of, it's up to us to maintain them and to replace them according to the 1975 agreement. And I can send that to council if you would like, because I couldn't believe it myself. And, but we decided that, so that's the agreement that we had. So we put together a plan in place. The reason why we're deciding to, to utilize this money for this is because of liability purposes. If somebody would get hurt, it is on the county to do these things. So I want to make sure that that's clear. It's for safety for our citizens. And the final project is the elevators at the, at the prison. As you know, the county's been working on the elevators for some time. We had the tragic incident there with correction officers Moles in 2016, and the county's been continually working on the elevator since then. I'm told this will be the final end of the, of some of the elevator issues that we have, that are used constantly on a floor building. But, so without taking any of the thunder, I think I just did from Eddie and Larry, I'm going to turn it over to them now.
I am here. Can everyone hear me?
Who's speaking?
Yeah. This is Eddie O'Neil.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes. Keeping in mind diminishing capital fund that we have, I'm going to reiterate some of the points that were made by Manager Pedri. We tried to focus only on high priority projects that presented potential liability and also were costing us money in expenses. And we felt we inherited an investment to try and minimize ongoing maintenance costs and upkeep. First project, as Manager Pedri mentioned, was some sill work that needs to be done on many of the window banks at the Penn Place building. There are several locations that have been pretty routinely problematic during moderate to heavy rainfalls. And we took apart one of the windows about a year and a half ago with the assistance of a consultant, Sobeck Roofing, and C and D Roofing. And as many of you may know, the building is a steel structure with a brick veneer that is on the outside of the building is basically the exterior. There's no block behind that. The building was built at a time where expenses were kept to a minimum. Some issues there, but we took apart one of the window banks and we came up with a solution to the problem. A lot of the window sills were not pitched as they should have been. The pitch does not have significant, a flat sill, a bend. And because of that, the water has a tendency to roll in. Some of it has to do with seals that have to be redone, but we are looking to put the sills bottom of the windows and starting with areas that we have problems with, please, outboard, like banks, windows. They're scattered throughout. One or two on the interior of the building.
Mr. O'Neil, how about try to speak a little louder and into your microphone sometime for getting cut off?
So we are planning on addressing the problem areas, you know, the areas that we have problems with regularly, and hopefully, if this takes care of the problem, it is slightly experimental. Aside from replacing all the windows, which would be an astronomical amount of money, this would be the best option to try and fix ourselves of the problem. So we are, we'll be working with Sobeck Roofing and bidding out that work. The council approved that particular project. I can go through them. Does anyone have any questions regarding what I described on that project that they would like to ask at this time?
Mr. McGinley, I have a question for Mr. O'Neil, if I could.
Go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Eddie O'Neil, this is Walter. Just wanted to ask you, how many lights on the Cross Valley Expressway are we responsible for, is my first question. But the second question is, and I, you know, I find it kind of surprising as, as the county manager does as well, is, is there any way that we could send a letter to the, to PennDOT to have them take over that responsibility at some point in near future? But more importantly is, how many lights are we responsible for on the Cross Valley?
Well, I think Mr. O'Neil just described the information about the windows in Penn Place. Are you going to move to the lighting on the Cross Valley, Mr. O'Neil?
I can do that. I just thought I'd give an opportunity for anyone to ask any questions about that first proposed project.
About the windows?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. O'Neil, Sheila, and did you say that one of the problems was caused by the way it was done?
Um, yes, yes. Part of it was the way the soldier course below the windows was laid. It was supposed to be a small pitch in order for the water to run off properly, and that's not done throughout the building. There are some areas where there is a slight pitch, other areas where we've been noticed by observation that it's fairly flat and allows the water to run back into the window pane. And if it's not full seal at times, that causes water to infiltrate into the lower portion of the wall below the window.
Is that something that should have been noticed a while ago and remediate it?
I think it was noticed a while ago. It's been an ongoing problem. It's been going on since long before I began. We tried doing some talking at different times, thinking that would cure the problem, but it really did not address the issue properly.
Okay.
Anyone else regards to the windows? Okay, Mr. O'Neil, you want to address the lighting on the Cross Valley? And Mr. Griffith had those couple of questions in that regard?
Certainly. I believe Mr. Fleisch is on the line with me. I do not count on the number of lights that we have responsibility for. I know we have.
Somebody can get that, right?
I can get that, absolutely. I will certainly get. I don't have that to mention at this particular time, but I do know that we have responsibility for the North Cross Valley and a small bank of lights located at the Dundee exit on the South Cross Valley.
Okay. If you would get a number, that's, I think that's Mr. Griffith's question.
I will have that from Mr. Griffith tomorrow morning.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Harry Hawes?
Go ahead, Ms. Hawes.
Hey, Mr. O'Neil, how you doing? Good to see you. First, a comment and then a question unrelated. The River Commons looks absolutely fantastic, and I wanted to say on behalf of the folks that live in downtown Wilkes-Barre that work there and that travel through there, you've done an incredible job making that sure that happens, because, you know, last year at this time, it was, it was certainly not the case, but it looks great. So really, thank you.
I just wanted to, Harry, wait a minute. I just wanted to add something to Mr. O'Neil on that point. I know that I spoke to people that live right across from this Cross Valley, and they were writing some letters to Mr. Pedri, telling him how beautiful it was and how well done. So I've heard a lot.
It was golf, golf course dreams coming true there.
Ms. Hawes, you had a question, I think?
Question regarding the lights, a couple of those. Are we responsible, Mr. O'Neil, first of all, for the cost of keeping those, those lights lit, or is it just a maintenance concern for us at the county level?
It is both. It is both. We do pay the utility costs. However, we are reimbursed by PennDOT 50% of the utility costs. We get reimbursed on a quarterly basis.
Okay, that's where the half was. All right. So that helps with my next question. So could we parlay the energy study that we commissioned here for the county? Can we apply that for those lights as well, and perhaps use some of those funds to offset not only the capital costs, but also the utility costs?
Well, to be honest, we are, we are planning on doing that with the provision that we are requesting to the capital fund. We've already done that. Right now, to do the entire project, we don't have a hard number. I have an estimate to do all that lighting, to convert it over to LED and repair all of the wiring that, that may need to be addressed. We're probably looking high number, about half a million dollars. And it could be well below that, but what we would like to do and what we're planning on doing is utilizing a portion of the energy savings funds for that, for that project, which would be $100,000 that we're requesting for the cap.
Good, good. Good leadership on that issue. Well, secondly, then, if that, if we come up short with, with that approach, I just want to know, I believe the accent team on Sosa's legacy funding, I think that would be an appropriate use. You know, I'm looking at the bottom line for our capital. You know, I'm looking at the bottom line for our capital funds. I know we're nearing about $3 million. And I know we try to really hold on to that capital fund because once that's gone, that's really gone. I would suggest perhaps we could consider using some of those funds to offset that hundred grand if we don't save it through the energy savings process.
Well, there will be a substantial savings in utility costs. However, in following up with what I mentioned just a moment ago, half of those savings will be realized by Penn Dot, half of them will be realized by the county.
Uh huh.
But there will be a significant reduction, probably about a 70% reduction in utility costs. I don't have all the figures here to go through it in detail, but I can put that together.
Yeah, no, that's excellent. And I'm just speaking with the improvements, not for the general utility costs with the Marcellus because that's an unreliable fund. But again, maybe to offset the capital fund hit that we're going to take from this, we could consider that. And I don't know if that would be an acceptable use. Just wondering if we could keep that on our radar.
Sure, we can certainly consider that. And once we get a more definitive number, we are working on it. Bill McIntosh was very well versed in that field, is working along with Greg Cars. And they're working with Penn Dot. And in response to a question that was asked just a moment ago, we have looked into requesting or at least inquiring about the possibility of Penn Dot taking over responsibilities for those lights. And not overly optimistic about that at this point in time, but we will pursue.
Yeah, you know, to sweeten the D, you can throw in a couple of bridges too. I'm sure they'll jump right on that. So thanks. No, thanks to the other staff members too. Really appreciate that in all seriousness. You guys are doing a very credible job. So thank you, thank you.
So now, what's the third project?
The third project was recently added. We had an evaluation done. I had a company come in to evaluate all the elevators. As most of you may know, or if not, I will share it with you now. Most of our elevators have not had significant modernization or rehab done in the better of 20 years. Now, we did undertake some projects with last year's capital allowance that went very well and have made much needed improvements to our Penn Place building and the DRO building or Brminske building. Right now, we still have several areas that are in need of attention. The most critical, I would say, is our corrections facility. We have had consistent downtime with those elevators. We did do many repairs in the wake of the incident in 2016. However, all of the controls and drives are antiquated. The controls are no longer available. As a matter of fact, one of the electronic boards that we needed to have replaced, we had to buy a used one that took our elevator service provider about three months to try and secure. If one of those boards goes down, the elevator is done. Dire need or upgrade. I had an evaluation done and it's a rough number. Obviously, if we are allotted funding, we will be bidding this project out and also can scale down. I did receive an estimate of just shy of $400,000 to basically replace both elevators, the drives, the controls, the cars themselves. Only thing that would remain in place are the rails that they are on.
Questions in regards to the elevators at the corrections facility? Obviously, we know we've had a tragic situation there. And hopefully, we can keep those elevators up to a standard that is very high. Mr. O'Neil, I think the elevators in the courthouse have gone through a major renovation probably four or five years ago. So they should be pretty good condition as far as the center?
They are.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinley, I have a question. It's Leanne McDermott.
Go ahead.
With the elevators in the prison, I thought that they were supposed to have been fixed by the contractor that was hired to do that, but that they never were. And then why didn't we go back to them to have them done correctly? I know you said you've been working on them for a while, or they have been working on them for a while. I just don't understand, like, if we paid them the money, why they wouldn't have been working properly?
They made the repairs that were necessary, but it's like having a 20-year-old car and trying to find parts. And obviously, if you've owned a car beyond five to seven years, you know, the expenses that are needed to maintain that go up exponentially thereafter. It's not any different. It's an old system. The drives are all AC, I'm sorry, DC drives, which are no longer used in elevators. Controls are no longer made, no longer available. And, you know, typically, if you can get 20 years out of a old system for an elevator, we're well beyond that with much of it. There were some upgrades made, I believe, in 2000. The problems we're having are not unusual for equipment that is of that age. It's not that it was not fixed, it was repaired, which continues to have problems and break down. At this point, I would have to get the records out to verify that. But I would probably say that we have a waiter down or a surface call made at least once a week over there. They do come and address it. Both elevators are currently in operation. But again, we're really running on borrowed time. And knowing that we will be in that location in many years to come, I believe that it's putting off inevitable. And the sooner that we get these repairs made and these modernization completed, the sooner we'll be able to realize, and the greater we'll be able to realize savings.
Anyone else in regards to the capital plan?
Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Dave, the manager Pedri just sent the agreement for the lighting system. And I was looking at it real briefly. It looks like we're just responsible, and it's not just, but I mean, just for council's edification, you could read it as you get a chance. It looks like we're responsible for the Cross Valley Bridge, the one that runs from 44 to Plains and the on and off ramps. I, when you say Cross Valley Expressway, I thought maybe we were responsible for the Cross Valley all the way from Dallas or from Back Mountain to Wilkes-Barre Township. So it looks like we're just responsible for the bridge and the on and off ramps. So just, I just thought I'd give that information to council. But you'll get a chance to read that as you move along.
Yeah, I don't think there's a lot of lights outside of that intersection. But you have the information there, so. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, Steve.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
So I'm looking at the capital plan for this year and also last year. Is there any way to get a reconciliation done between the projects that were voted on last year versus this year? Because I noticed that there was like nine different projects from last year's that were passed, which the funding source was coming from the $5 registration fee. And we know that's really not the case. I mean, so far, you've basically had two projects that were paid out of that fee. And I noticed, you know, like, for instance, County Bridge 24,006, which is West Liberty, and then 45809, which is East County Road. They were both scheduled to be taken out of the $5 fee. But then I noticed for this year, we only have Hillside coming out of the $5 fee. So can we get some clarity on maybe like last year's projects that may not proceed due to funding? And like sort of a reconciliation on where the funding would be coming from for those maybe like seven projects that were listed from the $5 fee?
Manager Pedri?
And like any outstanding projects in the past that may have been voted on but weren't completed?
Okay, Manager Pedri?
Yeah, I got that. I got the question. I'll run that down with Mr. Plesh.
All right, would you put that, please? And then you can send that out to council?
Yeah, I mean, my concern is, is that, you know, that each capital plan is passed by ordinance. So it technically is law. And, you know, it does, you know, allow the manager to spend out of those fees based on previous council decisions. But we know in reality that the funding might not be there. And knowing that the $5 fee is scheduled to go away next year, you know, where are we going to get those other sources to fix previous projects that were listed? So really, any open projects, we want a sort of a reconciliation and just to look at and see. Okay?
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, now the ordinance is introduced by the manager. Since it is a budget, that's the introduction. It does not require any voting on the part of council. And like I said, we have several months now to look and work on it and come back with a completed plan. And hopefully, we will have that done probably second meeting in August as far as voting on the final plan. And we will have it on the work session each, once each month in June and July, and probably the first meeting in August. So people have an opportunity to revisit this wherever necessary. Moving down to number three, a motion to approve the RFP for the audit services for the years 2020, 2021, 2022. This was on our work session last time. This came through the committee, and this is the recommendation of the committee. We have had this process in place. I think this is the third time we're going through this. We'll put this RFP out on the street. The committee will receive the replies, review them, and come forward with a recommendation at one of our work sessions. And then we'll proceed to award a contract based on our work session recommendations. We have a motion to approve the RFP.
So moved, Walter?
Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Kendra? We have a motion from Mr. Griffith, second by Ms. Radell on the question. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving down to number four. In light of the action by the governor's office on Friday, we were supposed to have a special meeting on Friday to approve a letter. Obviously, the governor conference came on at 4:00. And shortly after that 4:00 time, he moved the several counties from the red status to the yellow status. Luzerne County was one of the seven or eight counties that were removed. So it was not necessary to have a meeting. But I think Mr. Griffith was the one who suggested we have a thank you letter. And I said it would be added to the agenda on Friday evening. And we have a draft. The draft really is the first page that I put together. And the other pages are from the original work that was done and that was led by Ms. McDermott. And we would have a signature page that would be added to that. We have a signature page that was been signed by a whole lot of council people. And as long as everybody's comfortable with that, that's the signature page that we would be adding to the letter. Do we have a motion to approve the letter?
President, Sne.
Mr. Sne, do we have a second?
Second, Sheila.
And Saban? On the question?
On the question, Chair.
Yes.
As I did send an email out shortly before the meeting, I finally got a chance to look at it. And I think the last three pages of the letter, a restatement of the, what was intended to be sent last week to the governor, do not belong in the thank you letter. And for one thing, the end of it actually asks the governor to consider moving us to the yellow phase. So they were just sort of put right into that letter without considering that it didn't flow from the letter. But more than that, I think it's a thank you letter, and that's the purpose of it. I would like to make a motion to amend the letter to stop on the first page before the last paragraph and simply state, instead of that last paragraph that leads into the rest of the document, just say, "Thank you for recognizing the hard work of our residents and moving us into the yellow phase."
All right, so it's, "Thank you for recognizing..."
For recognizing the hard work of our residents.
The hard work. Of our residents.
And moving, and moving us into the yellow phase.
Moving us into yellow phase. We have a motion by Ms. Hauck. Do we have a second to Ms. Hauck's amendment?
Second, Chris.
Chris?
So is that going to be the context of the letter, just short and sweet?
Yep, thank you.
What Ms. Hauck's amendment would do would just be the first page with the amendment that she's added there at the end, taking out the last paragraph and substituting the verbiage that she provided. And then we would just add the signature page to that, Mr. Urban.
Okay, so the paragraph with the enforcement is going to be deleted?
Anything past that first page will be deleted.
Okay.
The paragraph that says, that starts, "The county submits this information." It says on page one, Mr. Urban.
Okay.
That's where the letter would stop with a final paragraph, just as I dictated it.
Okay.
Okay, everybody understand? Any other questions? This is on the amendment only. Indicate if you would like to support the amendment that Ms. Hauck has proposed, a second by Mr. Perry, to take the last statement out, replace it with the verbiage that she provided. And then we just would add the signature page. Okay? Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Saban?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Okay, now we have a new letter, really just the first page, removing that last statement, replacing that last statement with the verbiage that was provided. We had a motion by Mr. Sne and second by Ms. Saban who are the motion to approve the letter. Mr. Sne and Ms. Saban, will you have your motion amended as?
Yeah.
Yes, you're okay with that, Mr. Sne?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so now we have Mr. Sne and Ms. Saban makes a motion to approve the letter with the amendment that has just been voted on. Anyone have any questions?
I'd like to make an amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Who's that speaking, please?
Oh, sorry, Harry Haas.
All right, Mr. Haas, go ahead. What's your amendment, please?
I'm all about being appropriate.
After Mr. Haas gets through with it, go ahead.
Okay, just to preface it, I'm all about being appropriate. But again, a lot of people have been devastated by the governor's edicts. And a lot of people here in Luzerne County definitely are not expressing gratitude. They're still upset that they're not in the green, like a big chunk of the other states have been moving towards that direction. So I would like, I would propose that we would have a language. I'll get that specifically in a second. But I can't support a thank you letter unless we can really say with some expectation that we expect the governor to move us expeditiously into the green.
Well, Harry, yeah.
Excuse me.
We're sorry.
Mr. Haas, you want to give us your amendment? And then we'll get a second, and then we can, hold on to the question.
Again, I would say in that very first, in that very first paragraph at the end, it said, "We fully expect for the residents of Luzerne County." We fully, and I want to say, "We fully expect that you will move us expeditiously into the green with all deliberate speed." That's my amendment.
Let me see if I have that correct, Harry.
Yeah.
Expect to move us expeditiously, move green, always with all. What was the last word?
All deliberate speed.
All deliberate speed, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Do we have a second for Mr. Haas's amendment?
I'll second that amendment.
Mr. Griffith? Okay, so we have an amendment by Mr. Haas, second by Mr. Griffith. To add a sentence, "We fully expect that you will move us expeditiously..." To add a sentence, we fully expect that you will move us expeditiously to the green. Status maybe, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Hauss.
To the green, to the, short, to the green phase with all deliberate speed.
Yep. Green phase with all deliberate speed. Everybody understand the amendment? On the question.
On the question, Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead.
It's Linda. I don't think it's necessary, only because the paragraph, second to last paragraph on that page. Says the county will continue its efforts to proceed to the green status. And there was something that came out, I believe, from the state. Maybe it was in today's email that said that with, within 14 days, if we continue on our current progress. That we would, the counties would move to the green status. So I don't really think it's necessary to put that in there because we do say that we're going to continue to work to move to it.
Okay, anyone else on the question?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Mr. Griffith, go ahead.
Um, I just want to add to what Harry had to say and I certainly appreciate what Linda's comments are. When she spoke about that one paragraph, because it does say, it does say we're going to continue our efforts to proceed into the green card, but that's, that's something that's on us, that we're going to continue our efforts. We want, we want the governor to proceed and put us into the green and I think that's what Harry's point is. But more importantly, you know, quite honestly, the governor's been, he vetoed two bills that were very, very important to the county residents. In regard to the fact that we were, we were, the legislature passed legislation that wanted to take some businesses that were classified as non-essential and allow them to be essential. And this governor has vetoed that, which hurt a lot of residents and businesses in this county. So I don't think we should just, and I certainly appreciate the fact that he moved us to yellow. No doubt about it, but I think he has not been expeditious. I certainly think he hasn't been very forthcoming for the county in Luzerne, as well as all other 66 counties besides our own. I think, I think we've, we've been suffering on some businesses that should have been classified as essential and not non-essential, and those businesses could have continued to survive. And consequently, we ended up losing a lot of small businesses because of that action. So I certainly support Harry's amendment. I think that it's appropriate to put strong language in there that we're asking the governor to make sure that he understands how important it is to the county, that we're doing our part, now we want him to do his. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I would just like to say that I think it's, it is not necessary at this time to add this statement. I do believe that the governor has heard what we've asked for and has moved in a positive direction for us. And I think we as a county has, have made a lot of progress. And it's on us to continue to make that progress. That's my personal thoughts. Anyone else?
I mean, again, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Okay, Mr. Hauss, you've got the floor.
Again, I don't, I don't think what I said was either unreasonable, I don't even think it was redundant. And Frank, I think we're being very kind with this letter. You know, there's been a lot of civil disobedience across the state. It just seems like the timing of everything was very arbitrary in itself. And I know a lot of people put a lot of hard work into the document to open our county up. But again, this, it's just very arbitrary, so. Again, I'd ask the colleagues to really support my nice olive branch, it is an overture. And again, I don't, I don't, I think it's very appropriate. Thank you.
That's why we're going to make a vote here to see how the majority feels at this point, Mr. Hauss.
Good.
Anyone else?
Hi, this is Leanne McDermott.
Yes, go ahead, Leanne.
What if we added in that paragraph where we talk about going to green? Harry, would you be able to somehow fit it into that paragraph? Since we're talking about, you know, we're going to proceed, continue our efforts to proceed to the green color status? Do you think maybe it could be added in that paragraph?
Again, I, I don't, I think that's just all, you know, formatting stuff, I don't have a problem where it goes precisely. But, you know, my big issue is that, you know, this is done, by and large, a lot of people see this being very arbitrary. And what Walter said, the people go, they get their will done through their elected representatives. The governor vetoed what the General Assembly wanted to put forth by moving the counties forward and earlier and at a faster rate. And he vetoed that. He vetoed a lot of steps taken by the people. And I just think the average person looks at this, and people who own a business would not sign their name to this. Because they have, he has personally destroyed a lot of businesses and a lot of livelihoods for the working poor. For people that are making an hourly wage. And people are now going to be three months behind in their mortgages and their rents and how they're going to make that back. So really, I'm indifferently in about where it goes. But again, we need to put pressure on the governor and I don't have a problem doing it in a very appropriate way like this letter does. But it's very serious. And like I said, people in Luzerne County, their own businesses and their livelihoods have been really short-changed here. They won't sign their names to it. Especially without something like that, that's all I'm saying. But if, you know, if you're willing to vote for it because it goes in a different spot or anybody else on the council, I'm all for it.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead.
Chris, just like a big quick comment, Harry and Walter, you know, you have my support on this. So, you know, I try to keep a level head on a lot of things, but it's time we say something that we really, really mean. And I don't think it's going to help at all, but it's good to get it off our chest, so I agree with you totally.
Anyone else?
So Steve?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
I would also say, you know, and I am supportive of Harry's words. I've spoke to many people, you know, out in the community and they are very angry, you know, about the governor's edicts and orders. And we need to get business back. I mean, we really, at this point, can't even quantify how many businesses are going to be lost or how much money is going to be actually taken out of our county's economy. So, you know, anything to expedite us going into the green phase, I am all in support of. And I think we need to apply some serious pressure as a county to the governor.
Okay, anyone else?
And I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I got to chime in as well, if I may. Yeah, and I agree with what Steve said, and this is, this is very minimal pressure, okay? It's a sentence and it's, again, putting the responsibility back to where it emanates from, the governor. And, you know, we've seen this kind of stuff before. There are other issues at stake here, people dealing with mental health are going through a doubly hard time here. And we have a lot of, we have suicide rates that have gone up. I mean, this is such a bigger colossal problem. Every day that we are shuttered in here is, it's making problems for people that are unnecessary. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila.
Go ahead, Ms. Sabin.
I don't, I agree with Linda from the beginning. I don't think that's necessary. And the additional letter, I think that there may be a lot of people that were unhappy, there are also many people that weren't. I think that by the people that are, you know, saying they're unhappy with it and they want to have this. I think we're, it looks political to me. Just does. I think that the letter is fine with the change that Linda made.
Anyone else?
And if I could too, Mr. Chair?
Wait, Mr. Hauss, see if there's anyone else, you've had a couple opportunities. So if there's anyone else, they should get their first chance here.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Hauss, you've got the floor.
Yeah, no, that's why I chose, I totally understand what Sheila says, I want to be very careful about that kind of stuff. But, you know, at the same time, a lot of people on the side of reason and common sense are seeing what the governor's done as very political. So I, you know, I know it's a one side or the other, it seems like in this case. But I think the words that I proposed there were really not political. But it really does put a small bit of pressure on the governor since he's holding all the keys. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, Walter, one more time.
Go ahead.
And I just, and I just want, and I just want to add into the conversation that no matter what we do, it's political. I think this whole process that we're doing with the thank you letter could be viewed as political, there's no question about it. We don't have to send it, we don't have to send a thank you letter. We don't have to do any of this. And it's not political, it's something that we feel is necessary to thank him for his efforts to move us into the yellow. And I certainly don't think it's political for us to ask the man, the governor to move us into a green so that the people who are suffering get a chance to, you know, get some relief.
I heard someone else in the background there.
Yeah, Matt?
Go ahead, Matt.
I mean, I don't even agree with sending a letter. I mean, the thank you letter is just setting into, it's turning into a letter that wants us to go from yellow to green and I don't even know if I agree with that, I don't have enough data to even make that decision. But this is turning into a letter that we started on Friday when we wanted to move into a new phase and this letter is turning into the same thing. I mean, I don't even want to send a letter, not even a thank you, because what are we thanking him for?
And I understand, Matt, what you're saying. And my one thought is, whatever we do, if we don't do unanimous, I don't think it has a very positive effect. And if we have a difference of opinion on the letter and we have people who will not support it. I don't know if the letter has any purpose then. So whatever we say, I think we should have solid unanimous support or choose not to do it. Whichever people want to.
I'm just going to make one more comment is, I mean, I don't want to, I don't think we should thank him and I don't think we should move to green just yet. So I abstain from the whole letter.
So you're not going to sign it also?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
It's Kendra.
Kendra?
I agree with Matt, so the whole, I was on board with the thank you letter because there was so much work put into that letter for us to yellow. The charts that were drafted, all the information, the, our action plan. The Luzerne, mentioning the Luzerne County Ready website. So that's why, like, I thought we were switching this over to a thank you letter, so at least that work that was done could be recognized. But now we took all that out and we're essentially just thanking the governor for doing his job and letting businesses open as planned. So I agree with Matt in this case, like, don't thank him at all. He just did what he was supposed to do. We were, we had to do what we, what we needed to do, we did our job and he did his by moving us to the next phase. And I don't think it's something that needs to be recognized or a thank you be sent, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, we're going all the way back to the amendment as proposed by Mr. Hauss and second by Mr. Griffith. And I think the wordage is, we fully expect that you will move us expeditiously to green phase with all deliberate speed. And that would go into the letter as indicated by Mr. Hauss. Everybody understand the amendment? If you support that, indicate by saying yes. If you don't support it, indicate by saying no. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no, fails.
Okay, the amendment fails. So we go back to the motion to approve a letter. With the amendment that was approved that Ms. Hauck proposed, second by Mr. Perry. Mr. Snee made that motion, Ms. Sabin made that second. You've heard all the discussion. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, if, if after, since Matt made his statement. I mean, I was a little surprised about writing the thank you note anyway. I think that was Mr. Griffith, maybe you suggested it after we went to yellow. But if you, I've kind of changed my mind and agree with Matt and Kendra.
Okay.
Their position. So should we vote no then or should we just?
If we vote the motion down, there's no letter that would be approved or sent. Okay?
Wait, this is Leanne McDermott.
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment. First of all, it doesn't bother me that I, you know, I did spend time on it and we didn't have to send it to the governor. To me, that was wonderful that we got to move to yellow. So not sending a thank you note, certainly, you know, that doesn't bother me that if we don't do it. My biggest concern was just trying to get us to move to yellow. And again, that was a wonderful way to start the holiday weekend with the governor doing that and we didn't even have to proceed any further. So I, I'm fine without sending the letter, you know, I kind of do agree with, you know, Kendra and Matt at the point of, if it's just a thank you. Certainly, if we need to do something to go to green, I would hope that we don't have to do that. And within two weeks, this, you know, if our numbers keep falling, then we will just automatically go that way. So I just wanted to state that it didn't bother me doing all the extra work, you know, that's not of any concern.
Thank you. And our numbers haven't fallen, so that's a good thing and hopefully they'll continue in that direction. Anyone else on the motion?
Mr. McGinley?
The letter. Yes, go ahead.
On the, on the letter, the reason I asked for a thank you letter was I thought it was an opportunity for us to thank the governor for his ability to move us a week early as well as use it as a tool, for lack of a better term, to get us to move him into another phase. If we're not going to put that amendment in that Harry said and it was obviously voted down, then I'm not going to support the letter because I don't think that the letter is, does anything for us other than as Sheila or another council member, I can't recall who was, just thanks him, Kendra, thanks him for doing his job. And that's not what the whole point of the thank you letter is. The thank you letter is, yes, to thank him for moving us a week early, not for thanking him for doing his job. Thanking him for doing it a week early and giving us the opportunity to put a pitch in for our, to get us to go to green. That was the whole point of the thank you letter. If we're not going to put anything in there to move us to green, the whole issue to me is not even worth discussing.
Well, then you, when you vote, you'll express that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Snee?
I'll pull my motion.
You're pulling your motion?
I'm pulling the motion.
Alright, Ms. Sabin, are you pulling a second?
I'll pull, yes, yes.
Anyone else would like to make the motion in second? Very none, since there's a motion that has no motion or second. There's nothing to vote on. Thank you. Moving down to public comment on non-agenda items.
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raybo again.
Okay, Mr. Raybo, you've got the floor.
Okay, first of all, I would like to give notification to members of council and the manager that there is legislation that was put through the Senate. Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee on COVID Cost and Recovery. It's called House Bill 2419. And it's called the COVID Cost and Recovery Task Force Act. And it's, you know, basically defines the members of, who would be on this task force. And it would encompass one member of each state agency as an advisor to this task force in regards to getting the assessments for COVID-related costs and expenses. I think it would behoove the county budget and finance committee to work with Mr. Sweth and the manager to get an assessment of all COVID-related costs that the county incurred during the, during this crisis up to date. So then that way, once this task force gets around to moving, we can, you know, present them with what the county's costs were. And, you know, see what we could recoup because God knows we'll need it for budget time. Secondly, as far as this letter goes, I am for one, and I could say this for most of the people in the Hazleton area. We are not happy with the governor. We should, we should have been, he should have stopped the thousands of out-of-state residents from flooding into our area during the virus outbreak. He could have closed off access to the state roads and yet he chose not to. Our county manager asked him, pleaded with him to get the National Guard and he denied us. So I think as far as politics goes, Governor Wolf was the political mastermind from day one of this COVID crisis. We were the victims here. And I think for any person to say the governor is playing We were the victims here. And I think for any person to say the governor is playing it safe is just, it's just a fallacy, okay? I think the governor needs to act, quite frankly, apologize to the state residents of Pennsylvania for his woeful and inept crisis management, because he let, he has no experience in crisis management, none whatsoever. And for him to think that we should be thankful to him as far as what he did during this crisis is, is appalling to me. And it's appalling to the people in Hazelton and every other third-class city on the eastern half of this state. So I think what needs to happen is, I would, I'm glad that if there's no letter sent, that's better, because then it won't appease to, it won't be appeasement to, you know, the wannabe emperor who is, was elected Pennsylvania governor of this, you know, governor of this state. He should have, he should have recognized what his decisions did were reckless and harmful to this, this area and, and this, and this county. So I for one-
Mr. Raybo.
-am going to thank him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. Other members of the public who may be on who would like to speak?
Ron Knapp?
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
Can you? Uh, this is, I wanted to concur in respect to the letter of Governor Wolf, even though it's been decided-
Mr. Knapp, I can't hear you.
Hi, can you, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
That's better, Mr. Knapp.
Can, can you help me? Um, I wanted to say in respect to the letter that has been denied, voted down. I thought it was a very civilized attempt to voice our, you know, to make our voices heard in northeastern PA, Loser and County. I didn't think there was anything wrong with that. And to, to place in that letter what Councilmen, or yeah, Councilman Haas and Councilman Griffith and Councilman Urban, they're expediting deliberate speech, that is a voice that has to be heard from Loser and County. I, I don't believe we would have moved so expeditiously to yellow, the 29th, if we weren't, in a sense, being a voice prior to this meeting. Secondly, I wanted to mention about the Lipton report from last meeting. It's been said in previous meetings in regard to errors that have been made or the like about, that's been in the past, and let's move forward. I think it was about the second meeting I started attending council meetings. And now we have this Lipton report. And what I feel about this Lipton report is nothing short of an auditor brought in at the tune of $12,000 to audit, audit it. And I feel, I feel strongly that that was nothing short of kicking into can down the road. My, my personal perception of this, going forward, we have to be very considerate on conservatism, and not bringing outside affiliates in, try to make a means, a man, to try to avert the responsibility that is in your laps. It's Loser and County council members' responsibility to do their work and job. Second, or third thing I want to mention is, the, Mr. Enfil and his, uh, part about the windows and inadequacy in sloping pitching towards the building. Most insurance companies, they take a picture for, uh, pictures worth a thousand words, you understand? And for the council to actually visually see that inadequacy might have been very appropriate. And if he hasn't done it, you know, that, that might not be a bad idea. And, you know, I hope this is double-sized in the paper about the people, back to the letter again, that, that the people that, that didn't move forward with this civilized, to try to, to try to progress on, on the business.
Okay, Mr. Knapp, finish up, please. Thank you.
It's very important that people get revenue back in their houses and progress forward rate. Thanks for your time.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone from the public?
Hi, Jason Carr, Salisburyburg, Pennsylvania.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr, you have the podium.
Oh, okay. I just want to thank Mr. Vog and Ms. Radel for making that decision not to send a letter. The governor does not deserve a letter. The only letter he does deserve is one that demands that businesses and people are allowed to go back to work. I guess two questions for the manager, Mr. Pedry. One, are there any ramifications from a business right now opening inside Loser and County in the yellow stage? Understanding that the district attorney has said that she will not enforce any laws or, or any edicts from the governor regarding the shutdown. Are there any ramifications that a business may incur if they do open for business outside of the scope of a yellow order? And secondly, I see probably starting obviously in August that there's going to be thousands of people evicted from their homes and their apartments. Does the county, or is the county considering any monetary fund to be able to help the citizens of Loser and County?
Okay, Mr. Pedry, did you hear those questions? Mr. Pedry? Okay, Mr. Carr, we'll have to get back to you. I, I don't have a response from Mr. Pedry right now. Anyone else from the public, please?
Mr. McGinley, just to respond, uh-
Okay.
The, we can't make any recommendation to business owners, whether or not they're going to defy the order of the governor, that, the ramifications of that, they would have to seek their own counsel to determine what those ramifications are.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carr. Any member of the public? Any member of the public? Is that Ms. Sedman? Were you coming on? You asked a question?
Yeah, I was going to tell, I was going to tell Mr. Sarsa that the only thing I heard after the district attorney said she wasn't going to prosecute, I did hear the governor at one point say then he would use the Attorney General.
Okay.
So I don't know if he would actually do that, or if the Attorney General would go ahead with that, but that's what he said he would direct the Attorney General.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Okay, hearing no more from the public. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
No move, Sheila.
Okay, do we have a second from Ms. Sedman?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving right over to the work session. We have several items on the work session. We've already had a call to order, we already had to pledge, and a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Here, sorry, I was muted.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. House?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions to the work session agenda? Do we have a motion?
No move, Walter.
Walter, Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith's motion?
Second, Leanne.
Okay, Ms. McDermott? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions not heard? Motion carries. We're going down to the county manager first. I guess, Mr. Swett, you're first on the agenda. The monthly budget reports, please, for April.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your pocket, you have the monthly budget reports for April. As you know, we've been doing cash flow and analysis weekly. We've almost hit slightly over 83% as of last week. That isn't in the reports, that'll be in the next one. So as of this last Friday, the end of the day on the 22nd, we were at 83% for tax collection for the current year. The report, as I said before, is really the first month that we start to see some of the COVID crisis. We talked about the timing and how in the first quarter report, there wasn't much, not much, though. It's really, starts to go forward. So you have the report, you have the AP report, you have the cash, everything's in front of you. Any questions that anyone has that I can answer off the top of my head, I surely will. If I need to get back, I'll definitely get back as well.
Questions in regards to the monthly report from Mr. Swett?
Mr. McGinley, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Swett, if you'd like to.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Swett, I was looking through your budget quarterly, I guess it's a monthly report. And in for, in revenue, revenue item 41551 for the sheriff, you're showing an income of $2,075 in parking fees. Is that what we've, we've received from people who are illegally parking in the county?
Yeah, so the parking fees is, as you know, it's $25. It's, there aren't many. We don't budget anything, but we do obviously enforce it. So as the year has gone on, and we've had less people at all the main buildings, because we're close to the general public, if you take that, that number and divide it by the $25, that should be the number of citations that were issued for parking.
Wow, that's, I mean, $2,000, we're only three months or four months into the year. That's pretty good revenue for parking, parking fines. You must have somebody walking around the parking lot, pretty much.
Uh, it's not just that, Mr. Griffith, that, that is in there, but there are some, there could be other fines if somebody pays late, any kind of fee. So if any kind of fee gets tacked on or something. So I can go into the New World Report and get you something, but yes, that would be in there. But it's not just all parking fines.
Okay, all right. I just was curious, because I didn't see, I noticed we didn't have anything budgeted. So I'll go down into the expense line item, if I could. And I, I did write down some items number in general government, 5950. But one of the, one of the other questions I had, do we have a revenue line item for the monies that we receive from the CARES Act or from, for the COVID-19 reimbursement? Do we have a line item? I know we have one for expenses, but I don't see one that's created for revenue, do we?
Yeah, so as of right now, there's actually a few for expenses. So you'd see one for the general government. Some of the departments that will be more impacted, like building grounds, they have their own line. We're in the process of making one for revenue, I think it was brought up before. Any kind of salary reimbursement. So tonight, I'm going to go over kind of the PPE and laptops and those kind of things related to COVID. But any kind of salary reimbursement that we've put will be in those expense lines, but we'll also have a revenue line. And also in my presentation, I'll go through some, not all. I know Mr. Raybo talked about one. There's multiple parts of the CARES Act through DCD, through state and local legislators. So some of that is in the presentation as well. So it's, it's a few slides, I'll be going through that later. But yes, we will have revenue lines related to that, so you can kind of match up. This is what was charged, this is what was turned in, and this is what was actually received through the CARES Act and any kind of subsequent COVID funding.
Okay, and I'm going to go down my list of things that I quickly jotted down. In the district attorney's office in 5946 is lease payments. And now, I know, I asked this question before about the budget item, because we're already at 100%. In fact, we're almost close to over on that line item. But that was for lease payments. Should that not be categorized under some other line item under, instead of machinery? Should that, and I know she, I don't believe she has a line item for other contractual agreements, but maybe we, maybe the budget and finance office should consider creating one for that particular expense for her. Because that really is, is really misleading when you see machinery and equipment greater than $5,000, and she spent $32,000 out of that account, and just, justly so. I mean, her lease payments, they have to be paid. So that, just a question on how that process is done.
Sure, so we try not to add accounts. I would agree that if it's something that's regular, something that's every year, every three years, we would add accounts. We try to use the accounts that we have. It obviously is a little bit different, because it's a lease versus a purchase, but it is over 5,000. It is her vehicle that I believe you had asked about earlier. I believe there's an article about it. So it's not going to go over, it's going to be very close to that 100%, but you are correct in that that's the payments for the vehicle. It's not a different vehicle, that's a vehicle that you questioned last time. And it should be pretty much right at 100%. During the budget hearings, we do our best to get, you know, as accurate a number as possible. If a carrier tells us, you know, it's going to be a 5% surcharge or 3%, we do a lot of work, not just the budget and finance office, the individual division heads and the manager, in trying to get as accurate a number as possible. And sometimes we're right on, and other times, there's a lot of transfer. So it, it's definitely over 5,000. If it was something that she was going to have every year, and this was going to be a recurring thing for 10 years, we can add a line. Like some other things, we can always add a line or a fund at a later date, too, just because it wasn't done at the budget. We did that for all the things with Act 13, if you remember. We created a fund after the fact to move things over. So it's accounted for correctly. I would agree that it doesn't specifically say lease, but it's definitely over that threshold, and that's where we categorize it.
Well, I just, I mean, I just want to clarify that. That machinery and equipment greater than 5,000, they are lease payments, correct? That 32,400, 32,400, that was for lease payments this year, correct? Or was that for, that was not for purchase of a vehicle or anything, right?
No, it was, it was, it was lease payments for vehicle, it's not for purchase of the vehicle, yes.
Exactly. So, so that was my question. I, I know last year, I questioned the, the purchase of the vehicle. And, and that was, that's another, that was a concern from last year. But my, my big concern was the fact that we're not accounting for this 32,400 as lease payments. And that, and I mean, those are recurring. So just, you know, I just wanted to be sure that I was understanding. When I looked in New World, I thought that said lease payments for it, but, you know, I could have, you know, I could have been mistaken on that. The other, the other question I have quickly is budget, budget transfers, you already addressed that for me, and I appreciate that. I, I try to send as much of this out in an email to you, because I know it's, it's really hard for you to try and visualize what I'm asking for, you know, when you're, when you're on the, on the, on the phone. Under the assessor's office, under other contractual services, we're at 98%. And I think it's because of the Kama system or something, I believe. Or do we expect any more money out of that line item for the rest of the year? Are we going to be all right with that?
Uh, it's going to be very tight. I don't expect this to be way over. There is a possibility we'll do a transfer. You are correct. The Kama system and the, the work associated with Kama in that line is at 98%. I don't expect any major work, like we had last year, for any of the bills, for the June school billings or any subsequent billings. But I can't promise that we won't go over 2%, you know, 2% between now and the end of the year. So I don't see major expenses, but it is possible that it would go over, and we'd have to do a transfer.
Yeah, and, and again, you know, the, one of the concerns I have with transfers, and I mentioned this once before to members of council, as well as to yourself, is when we do a budget transfer, it actually skew, it actually skews our number on our percentages of where the budget actually lands as opposed to what the council actually approved. So when you, when you do a budget transfer of, say, when I'm looking at the assessor's office under other contractual services, the council budgeted 55,000. They did a budget transfer of $3,000, which bumped it up to 58. Now, of course, the, the percentage, when you look at it from a council point of view, it says they only spent 98% of their budget. Well, clearly, they did not. They overspent their budget by 1,986. But because they were allowed to do the transfer in, that knocked that number down. So that's where, that's just for councils edification, that's where we get kind of confused on whether the budget is going, whether we budgeted the right amount of money by a department or not. Is when we transfer money, and you look at a percentage, and it says 98%, clearly, if we didn't allow- Clearly, if we didn't allow that transfer to alter the total the council had budgeted, that would be over by actually ten percent right now. So just some information for members of council when they look at these reports. When you look at that line item that says, how much is the percentage that we spent to date? Or how much is used to date? If there's a transfer in there, you're not going to get a realistic picture of that whole, the whole information. So I just wanted to point that out to members of council as well as, and I know we talked about this before. So, and the last item I have on my sheet is the issue with the elections department. Again, the same question I have for the Bureau of Elections is under the machinery. I know we're probably going to do a journal entry to clean that all up, that fifty-seven thousand dollar overage that's out there for machinery and equipment greater than five thousand dollars. I'm sure there'll probably be a budget transfer, or we'll put some reimbursement in there for the COVID-nineteen, and all that stuff will be cleaned up. But I still have a problem with New World allowing us to spend money out of a line item that does not have a budgeted item by council. Because clearly, I mean, the whole purpose of the budget is to give budget and finance and the administration the ability to spend money the council's approved. If you guys can spend, if the administration could spend money the council didn't approve, I don't understand the point of having a, you know, a budget process. So just something for us to look at as we move along into the future. I know it's only like May, and you got a lot of things to work on. So I appreciate your answering my email as quickly as you can. If I get any other questions, I'll shoot them to you by email, okay?
I have a couple more, and then just a quick statement, and then we could move on. But the three hundred and forty-some thousand you asked about is coming in tomorrow. I believe it was in one of your old business, the money from the state. The treasurer's office got an email. It's coming in tomorrow. I don't know if it's a check or an ACH, but it will be deposited tomorrow.
Where will that be deposited, Brian?
Well, I think we talked about this before. There's not a fund set up. So currently, everything for elections is in the general fund. And we talked about, can we make a fund at a later point to pull things out of the general fund that both the revenue and the expenses would be over? And I think that's what you talked about with the fifty-eight thousand. So there's expenses that are going to be over, and there's going to be revenue that's over because obviously, we didn't know this was going to happen. The COVID part, we obviously knew about the election machines. So we will clean that up. We will, we have to have the flexibility to run the office. You know, the prior year cyber attack and this year's COVID. Obviously, at the time, council and the administration sat down, none of us had any idea. We've got to manage the office in day to day. I know there's some councils, some public that thinks we should or shouldn't have transfers. I know we go through it line by line, and my thinking is that, hey, we get really two lines. We get some money for salary and expenses, and then whatever we need to do to manage the office. So if something's over and something else is under, it's just the best estimate we have. So, you know, that's been the process, and I know you're aware of the process.
Sure.
And we have one other question on a transfer, and I had talked to you.
If I could just jump in real quick on that three hundred and forty-three thousand, that was money that's being reimbursed to us by the federal government for the purchase of the voting machines, correct?
Correct.
So that money should go, should that money not go back to the bond? That was the agreement when they borrowed the money, correct?
It's going to go, it's going to physically go to, it's going to be accounted for with elections, but it's going to physically be used for the bond payment. So it's not like the cash won't be used for the bond payment.
You just transfer the three hundred and forty-three thousand over to pay on the bond?
We're going to physically receipt the money in the general fund under elections and turn around and pay that money on the debt service.
Okay, thank you.
On your final question on the budget, there was a question on the budget transfer we did for the sixty-seven hundred. When I sat down and looked at that, I think you're aware that we budget in one department, not in every department. So it's not just HR, it's really all of admin services. And admin services had used their allocation. So some offices had five hundred dollars, some offices had a thousand dollars. So it wasn't just HR, but the admin services office had used their allocation, and that's why there's no transfer back to the reserve.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. McGinley, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else with questions for Mr. Swetts on the monthly report?
Yes, it's Linda. I just have two comments. One is, thank you very much for the detail of the report. And I do think that I'm seeing more detail in the accounts payable on the invoices, which is nice because it's very informative. But on that same vein, I'm a little, say, disconcerted, I guess, to see that some of those accounts payable have been, the invoices have been there for a couple of months because a lot of those people are small businesses in our area. And you have a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in outstanding invoices. Now, I realize it was the end of April, so maybe, I hope, most of them are paid by now. But to sit on those invoices, if we have the money to pay them, and I'm sure we do because your revenue still is ahead of your expenses, I think that is doing a little bit of a disservice to our county businesses.
Well, I would agree, but if you remember, the report is as of April. So as of now, I have eighty-three percent. So in March and April, we were just starting to get the money, and we were trying to be conservative. Also, at the end of the April, like many county departments, AP had one of its staff furloughed. So as money came in, and we adjusted to the staff that we have, things are running smoother. Bills are, we're doing our best to hit that thirty-day window. We're not trying to make any business, whether it be a small local business or a national provider wait, you know, forty-five, sixty days. But if we didn't have the money or didn't anticipate having the money, that does happen. And you'll also know that some months, you know, there's multiple pages for that reports, and some months, there's, you know, one page. And sometimes it's just timing, there might have been eight pages two days before the report was run. AP basically runs things about three times a week. If it's busy enough, we will run it five days a week. But if it's not, it's about three days a week. So if something's run on a Friday versus a Thursday or run on a Monday, it could greatly skew the number, even though it's for the prior month.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? You want to go on to the expenses for the COVID? Mr. Swetts?
Sure. Let me just get it up on my screen here.
Okay. I think Jared's putting it up for you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Jared. So basically, we took a similar format to the first quarter report of, as I said before, these are all non-salary costs, whether it be for elections, whether it be for our sheriff's office working at the testing site. We're in the process of gathering those. We want a complete report when we file these. So this is basically, you know, as I talked before, PPE things. Somebody needed laptops, if they needed internet access, headphones, those type of things, as well as masks, gloves, sanitizer. So it's a quick report, that, you know, that's the summary page, so we can go to the next page.
Next page.
So I think as we talked before, and this is by no means all encompassing, there's plenty of funding sources out there. I didn't list every bill that's in process, but just some of them. You can see them listed there, the coronavirus emergency supplemental relief. There's block grant money. There's emergency solutions money that's really for shelters and domestic, which may be more for our agencies and general fund related. And then I kind of talked about what Mr. Rabo talked about earlier. There's tons of different legislation from different local senators and house members in various stages of being accepted or presented. So there's always new items being added. Myself, my team, the Office of Law, and the grant writer, Michelle Sparage, as soon as we get anything, or if anything gets forwarded to the manager, we're gathering and trying to go for not just one pot. We want to get reimbursed as fully as possible, just like everybody else. So we want to use any potential funding source for any kind of COVID-related expense, whether it be a labor expense or a PPE expense. Next slide, please. So just some of the things, and again, this is not all encompassing. Now, I had said before, PPE. I must have hung out with human services budget presentations too long. I'm starting with the acronyms now. So I actually spelled it out there, the personal protective equipment, what some of it is. Again, what some of the remote workspace things are that we had asked for. And then again, the overtime, that's not in this report, but just some of the things that we're putting in for. And we're going to bill for everything. We've been on these webinars, HR, payroll, Michelle Sparage. Our goal is to bill for everything. We're not just going to say, Joe Smith worked for ten dollars, we want ten dollars. We're going to submit for everything and follow up and see what we get reimbursed back. So we'll include the retirement piece, we'll include the payroll taxes for any of the time that's put in for any of the eligible expenses. With this going on, and some of our other day-to-day and yearly projects like the audit, there's quite a lot going on. So that's why I said we'll have the actual salary and some of the, I think it's transfers to individuals, which is actually a line that elections uses to pay for seasonal help. So we'll have that for the next report. It wasn't that it wasn't ready. With the election being June second, we just thought it'd be easier to get it all together and have it as completed a report as possible for the next time we present. So this is the eligible expenses. Next slide, please.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, Harry Haas.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Yes, sorry, Brian, I don't want to interrupt your presentation. So with what you just said there, are we talking about the poll workers stipend then for the next report? Because I know that was increased to two hundred dollars.
Possibly in the next report.
Yep.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, it will be in the next report. So this is, and I even put kind of in the bottom here in the forty-thousand-foot summary. This is not.
Sorry, I don't want to waste your time there.
It's okay. This is not salary or salary-related. This is for the categories, as I mentioned before. You know, we worked with the purchasing department, we worked with accounts payable, our budget and finance team to gather this. This is what was actually out there as of now. There may be some future things encumbered, but this is the number we have in New World as of right now. So just for personal protective equipment and remote workspace and elections-type, again, non-salary, the pens that we talked about, things like that. This is what the county had spent to date, a little over two hundred thousand dollars. We're going to have more than this, and we're going to have salary and benefits. So, but this was just to give council an idea of what was spent to date and what will be filled out for reimbursement under the various types of grants and things that are allowed, any kind of reimbursement. Michelle Sparage has another one, I believe, for the prison that she's putting in for tomorrow. So again, I did not list every grant as we find out about them, whether it's my office, payroll, if it's related to any kind of forgiveness of taxes or any kind of payroll kind of thing that's changed. We're looking into everything that we can, and we'll be billing for them and reporting going forward. So this is what we have to date. This is kind of the subcategories, and you'll get a report on the salary and the related items for, again, the elections and for the testing site and anything else in the next report.
Brian, it's Walter. Do you know how much money we're supposed to get for the CARES Act money as well as the federal reimbursement for the COVID-nineteen? Do you not have a total from what's eligible to the county yet?
We don't because a lot of it says, it's, you know, this is county-eligible, but it doesn't say, you know, hey, this is legislation that you're eligible for. We're going to give out a million dollars. It doesn't slice out, is it first come, first served? Is it going to be prorated based on what's sent? And again, since there's just not one grant source, that's one of the things we're going through. So we will have a good idea. Again, we have to front the money on the front. Luckily, with the eighty-three percent, with all things that are going on, I'm very pleased with that. So we have the cash available, but we're definitely looking to get reimbursed. And I know from just the last flood event, the two thousand eleven flood event, I believe we might have got a last payment somewhere around two thousand fifteen. So we know there's going to be paperwork, there's going to be follow-up, and we're not going to get all this money from one grant, yet alone multiple grants, in one year. So we will keep as detailed reports as possible to say which department submitted it, what it was for, and work through the process of getting every penny claimed.
I got an email from the Department of State to say we're supposed to get like one seven, a hundred and seventy-four thousand and change, I guess, on CARES Act money and a hundred and some thousand on a federal site. But I don't believe that's all that we're supposed to get, is that correct?
It's not. I could tell you either a hundred and seventy-two or a hundred and seventy-four is just a grant that Michelle Sparage is putting in for tomorrow that's eligible for prison and public defenders and those type. It may include the DA, that's kind of court-related and things with incarceration. So that's not all. I'm sure it's going to be in the millions. That's, you know, two grant sources. And again, you know, we're in the early stage. Yes, we have almost a month or two months worth of bills, but really, the labor part and the impact on our labor force in the county really started kicking up going forward, not in the first quarter. So you'll see it in this report, you'll see it in the next report, regardless of if the county moves to green and how fast we get there. So we'll report everything, we'll file everything, and we'll follow up.
And, Mr. Griffith, if you remember, I think we got several emails that said that there was CARES money that went to Harrisburg, and then the state would distribute that money. Except there was, I think, five counties, the five largest counties in the state. They got a direct payment that came from the federal government. So like Philadelphia and Allegheny and some of those counties got some direct money. All the rest of the counties that did not get direct money are part of that. I think it's three-point-three billion. I don't believe there is a plan at this point that I've seen that indicates how the distribution will occur. But that should be coming out. And obviously, Mr. Swetts has indicated that he's keeping close track of all those expenses, and hopefully, that will help us as we move forward in reimbursement. Okay.
That's all I have on the COVID to date.
Thank you. Mr. Pedri? Mr. Pedri?
I'm with you. Hold on, I'm on mute, I'm sorry. How are you?
Okay. Update on the primary election, please?
Sure, okay. So we got great news today. Today's the last day for the mail-in applications for your mail-in ballot. So let me pull the numbers here. The, and this is, all the credit in the world is going to the election staff, the, everybody who worked in there, the people who've been stepping up and helping out across the entire line. We have young, old, everybody was helping up across the entire county to step up here and really got through. Election staff was working from eight AM till eleven PM numerous nights in order to get across the line. This past Memorial Day weekend, staff was working from eight AM to eight PM over the weekend. And I'm pleased to say that we received fifty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-six mail-in applications that have been processed as of today. We have, they have all been processed. Fifty-one thousand of those have been mailed out prior to today. That last a thousand mail-in ballots will be going out today. That is an incredible amount of paperwork that this team put in. Over seventy people working in three shifts, nonstop, on these machines that the state provided us. Early last week, the state, through some desperate pleading by myself and our elections director, the state provided us with three more machines that assisted us across the line to get us there. So they have now been, of the fifty-two thousand that we've received, fifty-one thousand have already been put in the mail, and all the credit goes to the hard work of the people who have been doing this. It's just a nonstop job for the last couple of weeks. Of our ballots returned, of the fifty-two thousand, we have about sixteen thousand ballots returned so far. That's not including today's mail. So that's, all those numbers will be in the next couple of days. Here's what I would say for the, for the voters out there who do have a mail-in ballot. If you, so if you have a mail-in ballot, you haven't mailed it in yet, or if you haven't received your mail-in ballot, and you're going to get it in the next couple of days, you have the option to drop it off at Penn Place, twenty North Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm going to be putting a press release out on this tomorrow, so that people are aware. You have the option to drop it off in the lockbox at Penn Place. In addition, we've worked out an arrangement with the United States Postal Service where the post office in Wilkes-Barre, as well as the post office in Hazelton. Any individual can bring their completed ballot in their envelope to the counter at those post offices and drop them off there. We are going to be picking up those ballots every single day by election staff or by one of our sheriff's department. This will allow it, people not to worry about it. I put it in the mail, it took three days to get to Wilkes-Barre because we can only count ballots that are received by June second at eight PM. The doors of Penn Place will be opened up, obviously, all day on June second from eight AM to eight PM, so people can drop off ballots there as well. But we have over fifty-two thousand ballots printed so far. as well. Uh, but we, uh, have over 52,000 ballots, uh, printed so far. Um, I also want to thank a lot of the, um, hard workers, uh, that we've had here. Uh, they've worked in the, in the warehouse and the non-stop trying to get us across the line. We have an election board meeting tomorrow night where we're going to be going through the entire process for the polling places. Um, I do believe that, uh, you know, the, the 58 polling places will be, uh, will be completed, will be, have a, have, uh, a professional, safe and secure, uh, election. Um, and then we'll proceed from there. Uh, so does anybody have any questions on the primary?
Questions for, uh, Mr. Pedri in regards to the primary election schedule for June 2nd?
I have, I have some, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Um, uh, Dave, they, they, they spoke about, uh, dropping them off in the ballot box at the, in the lobby. On the, on the yellow sheet that was sent out to the county, uh, voters, it says in there that you can't have, you can't hand deliver anybody's ballot but your own. Uh, who's, who's checking that to find out that, uh, somebody's not dropping somebody else's ballot off in that box?
We have security at Penn Place.
But are they checking the, physically checking the ballots? Cause I know some people took multiple ballots over there and dropped them in the box and nobody checked them.
I'll review that with staff.
Cause it says you're only allowed to drop off your own. And, and I know there's people that are taking like their fathers and they're taking their brothers and, and all those people and they're just saying, just put them in the box. So is that's, that's obviously some, a concern for, for some. I mean, I don't think it's something that we should be doing, but, uh, and also on the, um, I had a couple, I had another question here for you. Oh, are we gonna, are you thinking about opening up the county offices at all between now and, uh, election day?
Yes.
So, I mean, if we're going to go yellow on Friday, is there any, I mean, this isn't election related, I probably should ask you under the voting session, but are we going to open up the county on, uh, on, after Friday, all the offices?
Monday, June 1st.
The next item on the work session, uh, in regards to reopening.
Oh, is it on the work? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the next item, Mr. Griffith.
Okay. Um, so let me see. I have another one here. The county, I got that ballot return box answered that one. Additional cost, oh, the additional cost for the tabulators. Did you, did you say we had to get additional tabulators, uh, Mr. Pedri for the, uh, Bureau of Elections?
Correct. One additional central tabulator, which is not the tabulators at the polling places. This is the central tabulator.
Right, right. Will we, will we have to absorb that cost or can we get that under the COVID, do you think?
Uh, that'll be under COVID because the reason why, uh, we put, the only reason why we need this is the incredible amount of mail-in ballots due to the, um, to the coronavirus. And I ran that by the state before we rented it.
So, so, so then, so, and last time I think we had a, a discussion about elections. So if someone comes to the polls and they want to vote with the machine, they can vote with the machine, correct? Even if they're not handicapped?
If an individual says they would like to vote at the machine, the machine is designated for disabled people only. Our judges of our election are not able to ask people, what is your disability? So if an individual says, I am going, I, I would like to vote at a machine, our judge of election is going to assume they have some sort of disability and we will allow them to vote on the, vote on the machines.
Okay. Um, and, and the, another question is on the pre-camvassing. Have we determined where that, that was one of the questions that I sent in as well. Is that any place that we have designated is the pre-camvassing is going to take place to accommodate 100 people? If, I mean, potentially, we probably have the ability to get 100, whether you'll get that many or not. I don't know until they actually reply, I guess, to the bureau and tell, tell you that they're going to have somebody there for the pre-camvassing. But do you have a place in mind where people are going to be able to pre-camvass?
It'll be on, it'll be in Penn Place, third floor in, uh, courtroom number three, which is the largest courtroom at Penn Place.
That's perf, that's perfect. I, I, I didn't think about the courtroom, so I appreciate that input. And the la, and the other question is the, um, the ability for poll watcher certificates. I've gotten some requests and concerns from people that, candidates that want to get poll watcher certificates. The application's put out online, but because the building is in lockdown currently, how are they going to physically be able to get those poll watcher certificates and get them to their, to their workers in time for the election if we have the building locked down?
Uh, I think they would be mailed out. I'll, I'll track that down to make, make sure, Walter, but just send those people over to me and I'll make sure they get their, their certificates.
Well, the, the problem with mailing them out is obviously they have to be according to the application process. You have to designate who's going to be the poll watcher when you send in the application. So at some point you're going to have to, somebody has to pick them up and sign for them according to the, the paper, the out, the, uh, application process that's out there online. So, I mean, I know that's something that probably will come up tomorrow, maybe at the Bureau of Elections.
Let me, let me track that one down, Walter. I know the answer to that one offhand.
Yeah, I, I, cause that's, that's probably the hot button issue right at the moment. We have a lot of candidates. I mean, Harry's one, and we have other candidates on the congressional side that are going to need poll watchers, lots of poll watcher certificates, and they're going to need to get them, you know, probably by yesterday. So that's going to probably be a big issue for you. So I appreciate, and, and I stopped over at the Bureau of Elections office, uh, last week sometime and I stopped, I stopped to see Brian and Carl and, and Andrea, and, and I'm telling you, their hands were just flying doing labels and, and trying to keep everything going. And, and there's probably other people that I didn't get a chance to see. But I will tell you that based on what I watched at that, in that, uh, lunchroom, there's a lot of, lot of detail panned. I, I want to say it's like, um, it's, it's, it's actually very tedious work. It's not like while you just stick a label on and you move on to the next one. You physically have to read every single label and you physically have to make sure it's going on the right envelope because, you know, and I know, God forbid, somebody would either get the wrong ballot or the wrong envelope. So, so it's very time consuming for everybody to do this job. So I did stop over to watch that. And, uh, I will tell you that, uh, I didn't think, I don't think the state really thought this whole process through when they made this whole process of mail-in ballots. But more importantly, I don't, obviously, we didn't think about the COVID-19 issue that came up that really lambasted everybody and their processes and, and everything that's going on. So I do appreciate the hard work that, uh, you know, you get these people to do at last minute until 11 o'clock at night to get this done. I, I certainly see the work that's being involved there. So I appreciate everybody who's stepping up to try and make this go as smoothly as possible. I think, will we have problems? You know, you know what? Realistically, we have to look at, yeah, we might have some, but based on the amount of work that's going to have to be done and the amount of, uh, percentage for error, I think, I think if we, you know, if we get 10% error, we're going to be doing pretty good considering you're talking about 50 or 60, 70,000 ballots being mailed out. So thanks for all your hard work on getting that done. I appreciate it.
You know, I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that. And I agree with you. I, I have talked to Kathy Bookbar from the, from the State, Department of State numerous times. Uh, she's been accessible. Um, and you know, I, as well as other county administrators and county commissioners from across the state, uh, we said, listen, when this whole thing is over, we want to sit down with you and tell you what works and what doesn't work. Uh, first off, having small labels that, that workers have to specifically pull off is, it doesn't work on a, on a, on a, on a real life basis. Um, and you know, I couldn't think of our, of our much, much larger counties like Philadelphia, Montgomery and Allegheny, uh, how they're working. Uh, but, uh, you know, we got it done here. Now it's just a process of, um, of following through and making sure that people get their, their ballots back, uh, as soon as, before June 2nd.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Griffith.
It's Chris. Uh, Dave, one question for you. Um, I know you talked about this before. The results would be the next day. Can you, can you expand upon that?
The results are probably, they may not even be the next day, Chris. Uh, this is something that the state is going through, um, across the, uh, across the entire state right now. It's actually just an article in Politico magazine, uh, that I saw from, uh, the entire state, which is a concern for the November election. Um, what's going to happen is the state will not allow us to begin reviewing, reving, begin counting the mail-in ballots till 8:00 PM that night. So currently we have three tabulators that we'll be utilizing in order to count the votes. Uh, if the tabulators work without any problems and we work straight through, they do 3,000 ballots each an hour. So if we start them at 8 o'clock, uh, 3,000 ballots an hour, we run them till 1 o'clock in the morning. That's only, you know, 3,000, that's 9,000, 45,000 ballots. And that's before we add in any of the ballots that are actually coming from the polls. Um, so the staff will be working. The staff has identified it. Uh, it may be all day, uh, the next day, starting at 8:00 AM and going until 1 o'clock in the morning or the night before. But the most important thing is we're going to do it safely and securely. Um, I've reached out to the head of the Democratic, uh, local Democratic Party and I said I would want to make sure that someone will be there as a, as a, watching the pre-camvassing process. Um, I have on my list to do today to reach out to the Republican head, head Justin Barron's. I haven't been able to call him today, but I'll call him first thing tomorrow and make sure that they have someone coming, as well as every candidate has the ability to, to send someone as well. Uh, we're going to be working. We're going to have numerous, uh, the, the bipartisan team will be counting. But I, this is, this process of counting paper ballots is the first time we've ever had it here. Cause obviously before we were just able to take the, what's called the PEB card, uh, from the previous machines and input that into the system. So we're not going to have those, that, that system anymore. So now we're going to have to physically count every single vote through our tabulators. It's going to take some time, um, but we're going to do it right. We're going to do it correctly. Um, and then the Board of Elections has to review everything, um, for their review of it. And there may be an adjudication process on provisionals and those types of things that the Board of Election has to step in on as well. So they have their, they have a lot of work to do as well, um, over the next couple of, of next couple of days after the election.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Steve here.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
Uh, Mr. Pedri, you said the Penn Place was going to be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
Is there any way to move it to, uh, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM since the polls actually open at 7:00 AM that day?
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'll reach out to security on that.
Anyone else? I just have a comment, Mr. Pedri. Uh, if Mr. Griffith is right that there's going to be 100 people there at Penn Place, I don't believe there's any room in Penn Place that could hold 100 people with the social distancing. Uh, well, I would hope, number one, you, uh, someone is able to, uh, survey that and check it out. And then number two, whatever those limits are, uh, we should maybe publicize that if that's the case, or seek a spot that is large enough to handle whatever number of people we expect. Uh, okay?
I don't, I don't know if the voter warehouse is heated though, but that might be a place to do it, Dave.
I, I don't know if I want to take the ballots out of the Penn Place.
Yeah. So you're going to have to consider some options, I guess. Maybe, I don't know. Think about it and, uh, maybe there'll be some.
I'll, I'll sit down with our engineers. They're pretty good at figuring out problems.
People that could help with, with whatever so that you can, uh, accomplish what you need to do. Okay?
Uh, Mr. Mc, Mr. McGinley, real quick. I think on that pre-camvassing, I believe, and I know Mr. Butera is on the line, but I do believe that the law states that they have to tell you if they're going to attend the pre-camvassing a certain many days in advance. So if that's in fact the case, you might have a better handle on who's actually going to send somebody. I mean, if you just take, take how many people are on the ballot and add each one to the, to the count, you might have a potential for 100 people. But I don't think you're going to have delegates and alternate delegates sending people to a pre-camvassing. But I mean, they have the option to do that for sure. But I think it'd be good to know what they're going to maybe send something out to all the candidates and say, we need to know by X, so we know how much room to provide.
Uh, yeah, uh, Walter, this is Mike Butera. Uh, I, I was on the phone with Shelby and, and Nolda today and Paul Ratic, and we were talking about that. And it, it doesn't seem to be like a lot of interest in watching it. I mean, one candidate gave us a list of people that he's going to relay. He's going to have, he's going to have one person there all day long that they're going to relay. A couple of other people called and, and, and wanted to know what the system was going to be, how we're going to do it. And they, they said that they're, they're not going to, uh, come and observe. They, they think the system is, is being run fairly. There's a lot of checks and balances. There's a lot of people watching. And, uh, I, I really don't anticipate a lot of people there, uh, observing.
Well, that might work, Captain. Uh, uh, as far as what Mr. Griffith also said, yes, I spent some time over the elections last week myself and Mr. Perry accompanied them one day. And I agree, uh, there's been a lot of great work done there and the staff has really, uh, stepped up to meet the challenges. So, uh, very important that we make sure we acknowledge their work because they've done a great job. Moving down to number three, uh, Mr. Pedri, is still on.
Yep.
Update on the virus and update on your potential plan for reopening?
Sure. Ri, really quick, just to, just to back up one second here. Uh, Paul Ratic, our solicitor, just reached out to me as well. Uh, the poll watcher certificates are going to be located, they're located on the, the security at the first floor of Penn Place. Um, they can be mailed or dropped off to that location. Certificates are prepared by Bureau of Elections, uh, and arrangements can be made by calling them to help them set up a, pick up a certification. Uh, I'll, I'll discuss more of that at tomorrow's, at the election board meeting, just to follow up on that.
Okay.
To make sure everybody's aware, especially the candidates, and I'll make sure that the, the party's not about to. Okay, moving forward with, um, with the coronavirus. Obviously, uh, as, as council is well, well aware, we are moving to yellow on, on Friday, May 29th. Um, the most important thing that I'm going to ask council to get across to your constituents is yellow does not mean green. Yellow does not mean that we're moving forward no matter what. But what it does mean is a cautious, um, opening right now. And I truly feel, uh, that it's thanks to the hard work of Loser County citizens that we're even, we're even here at all. Um, especially where we were about a month ago, we were one of the worst in the state. And now we're, uh, and now we're, we're feeling so much better about it. We're still not out of the woods yet. So, uh, Loser County needs to be open for business. Uh, we've never stopped, um, being open for business throughout this entire process, but we were looking to close some buildings and doing those things. I'm working with, um, our sheriff, some, uh, Brian Samsky and our billing and grounds coordinator, uh, Bill McIntosh. Tomorrow morning, we will be meeting with the courts, uh, to get their input, uh, on the final touches of our, uh, of the plan that'll be in place. The plan will be in place for Monday, June 1st, um, so that the, the court, the courtroom facilities and the courthouse facilities will be, uh, back open, uh, for business. There will be social distancing guidelines, meaning that there are only a certain number of people allowed in certain locations. Uh, that will be maintained by security, um, as, as you walk in, the sheriff's department as you walk in. Uh, there will be temperature checks for as long as we're in yellow. Um, uh, Sheriff Samsky was able to obtain, uh, uh, thermometers, the, the head thermometers, they don't actually, they're, they're approved by the, 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 um, the CDC that don't actually have to touch, uh, the, the person. Uh, they will be checked. Anybody exhibiting a high fever will not be allowed in. Uh, masks are going to also be mandatory. Um, and there are some masks, uh, that we will be able to provide to individuals that come in, um, as well, uh, to the, to the courthouse. Um, staff has been made aware of the situation. Obviously, we are still accepting online payments and online filings and mail-in filings and those types of things. We never stopped any of those things. Uh, but coming to the courthouse, uh, it would, and, and other buildings is now going to be moving towards the open stage. Uh, I'm going to be getting that into play probably after meeting with the courts tomorrow morning for the final touches. We should have that out to you guys probably Thursday or Friday, um, at the latest, uh, to get this thing opened for Monday. The department heads have been made aware, uh, to make sure that they have their offices, uh, properly staffed. Obviously, some, some departments will still be, uh, utilizing the work from home abilities, which has been working out very, very well, as I said in previous, um, uh, in previous, uh, uh, meetings. So we've been, we've been able to get a lot of stuff done in that work from home process. We're now at the process where we're going to take the next steps. Uh, the main things that people come to the courthouse for, gun permits. Gun permits are now done, uh, via Dropbox, uh, and then all the paperwork is done. And then they set up a, um, an, uh, an interview, um, and a picture with the sheriff that's going to be held in our records retention building. Um, and they're going to start doing those, uh, pictures on Thursday. So that's going, that's a big, uh, stopper of foot traffic in and out of the courthouse. There's going to be no juries, uh, for the month of June, which is also another, uh, large foot traffic, uh, into the courthouse. Um, you know, PFAs, uh, during this time of, uh, of, of quarantine, unfortunately have, have gone, um, up. Uh, we are at 275 PFAs as of today. Uh, from, uh, Sheriff Samsky told me this is a large number for this timeline, uh, that we're talking about. Uh, we can never lose sight of the fact that there are those of us, uh, who, who are honestly are quarantining with our families, but domestic violence is still very, very prevalent. Um, and those 275 PFAs were daily brought into the courthouse, provided hearings by the courts. And I want to thank, uh, President Judge, uh, Michael Vog for his commitment to making sure that people, uh, getting PFAs, um, have the ability to do that. Those hearings must be held, um, and, uh, we will be moving forward those things. Things like assessment appeals hearings have already started. Uh, and Kristen Montgomery from the assessment board has already started the process in order to utilize things. It's not going to be the same. We're going to be social distancing. We're going to be quarantining. We're going to be, uh, sanitizing. We're going to be utilizing masks. Uh, but I think over this next two week period, if we can, if we can maintain where we need to be doing things and keep business here, we can move into the green. Uh, so that'll be our goal.
Questions from Mr. Pedri? Okay, hearing now, we'll move down to number four. Council committees. Mr. Vog?
Yes. So Act 13, we're going to meet in the next two weeks. Uh, I haven't scheduled the meeting yet, but I'll get that done this week.
Very good. Mr. Perry, authority boards and commissions?
We started meeting up on the 16th, uh, 6 o'clock on the teams.
Okay. Budget, Finance and Audit, we have a meeting set for tomorrow afternoon, 4:45, to get an update on the audit process and also to talk about some of the findings that were noted in the last several audits that were supplied to the county. Mr. Haas, Legislative?
For the, for Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Montgomery? Do you have your mic muted?
I keep hitting it, I'm sorry about that. Now it works. Okay. I apologize. For the Real Estate Committee, we have our meeting set for Thursday, June 11th at 2:00. Uh, Ramilda and I discussed it, and we will be getting, uh, a recommendation for some of the things that we discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, very good.
That's correct.
Uh, Ms. Howe, Strategic Initiatives?
Nothing on strategic initiatives. Uh, the Code Review Committee has a meeting scheduled on Monday at 2:00 to continue the administrative code work.
Very good. Mr. Haas, Blighed Properties?
Blighed Properties has not met.
Okay. Mr. Vog, County Cares?
Yes, County Cares, this was put on hold, uh, obviously due to the whole pandemic, uh, but I think the community needs it now more than ever. Um, so I'm asking, uh, Mr. Chair, if we can add, you know, agenda item to the voting session next week to add the three members of council to the committee?
Okay.
And then, um, Mr. Vice Chair, if we can add, uh, some applicants to the ABC interview session for the County Cares Commission as well?
Okay, fine, fine, to Perry. Did you hear, Mr. Vog?
All right.
Very good. Riverfront Parks, there has been no activity, obviously, with the current health situation, and the same with the Plains Tiff. Uh, everybody get the resolution in support of Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority Grant application?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
This was a, uh, application that the Flood Protection Authority is going to be submitting in regards to an evaluation of the levee system, particularly in the South Wilkesboro, Hanover and Plymouth sections, I believe, and they've asked for the, the county to offer our support. We do not have any financial obligation, uh, in regards to this application. Ms. Procomo, is that correct?
That's correct. It's a, a resolution to support, uh, the application.
Any questions in that regard from council? If not, that will be something that we will have on the agenda two weeks hence.
Mr. McGinley, before you get to public comment?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Urban?
Um, I was at, you know, as you know, I'm, I'm the council representative for the MHDS Advisory Board, so we're going to actually be holding a virtual meeting on June 11th, um, from 3:30 to 5:00. I asked for a meeting because I think it, you know, it is a critical time, we haven't met yet. Uh, there's a few, few members that are brand new, so I think we're, you know, we're ready to get started, and I think, you know, it'd be wise to, to have a meeting, you know, knowing the current situation in the county, you know, is fairly responsible for mental health, so, um, you know, with, with, given the fallout that we're, we're probably going to face with, with the economic impact that we're having here, uh, with this COVID crisis.
Thank you. Would you please, uh, send an email to, uh, Ms. Lawrence with the date and the time, and we'll add that to our calendars so people are aware of that?
Right, the virtual link hasn't been created yet.
Yeah, but just send the date and the time, and, and when the link is created, uh, we'll add that, that information.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter, I just wanted to know if you're progressing on the appointment to the 44 Airport, I mean, Dow Airport.
Twice, Walter, there was nobody there. Uh, but I did stop personally, and there was nobody there that I could speak with, uh, unfortunately, I guess, due to everything's been going on, but I will make another trip. Hopefully, maybe Friday with the change into the different status, they will be, uh, available. Okay? Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Snee. Go ahead.
Uh, in place of sending the governor the letter, I'd like to thank every person, uh, every, uh, person in Luzerne County for the sacrifices they have gone through, through this pandemic. As everyone knows, there's ups and downs in life. It's how you pick yourself up. Anybody could, when everything's going good. But it's an honor to serve these people because they have something special in Luzerne County. It's the honor, the character and the fight. Nobody's taking my small business, and we're all, we've got to all fight through this together. They're the people that deserve the thank you. The people of Luzerne County that came through after a large number of people were sick in this county. They're the people, a- and I'm honored to serve them as a member of Luzerne County Council.
Well said, Mr.-
Maybe we should-
Hey, someone else was on, sorry if I interrupted?
I was just saying, after Mr. Snee, maybe we should write a letter to the editor or something, or a letter thanking them all.
Uh, if you would like, I'll try to put something together, get it circulated to everyone, and if everybody's pleased with it or satisfied with it, we'll add it to the agenda for a letter that would, uh, go to the newspapers, uh, in response to what Mr. Snee said, if that's okay. Everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, public comment?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Rayvo.
Okay, Mr. Rayvo, you've got the podium.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to notify County Council that tonight, uh, out of the Senate Transportation Committee, the gas tax will not be increased, as it was voted down in the committee, just so you're all aware. Um, I'll also, I'd like to ask a question of the manager, uh, uh, you know, in light of, uh, what he said for the elections, um, because I brought this up at the last election board meeting, I don't know if, uh, they can answer it or if he can answer it now. Uh, is the parking, uh, space large enough for the castle in Hazleton, uh, for the voting wards to accommodate? Because I brought up the suggestion to use the Domestic Relations Building, uh, the Domestic Relations Office in Hazleton, or even, uh, to talk to the owners of St. Joe's, the former St. Joe's Hospital, to use that parking lot, uh, if there needs to be supplemental parking. Maybe if, uh, he can answer that question now, or if he can wait till tomorrow, um, on that. Uh, and I have a suggestion as far as the letter goes, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Snee on what he said, and I would also add that I do not thank the people of New York, uh, State who flooded our state, knowing full well they could transmit the virus to our people here in Luzerne County and the rest of the state. Those people ought to be ashamed of themselves. Um, as far as, uh, you know, for the sending of the letter, I think, uh, what needs to happen is, uh, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Manager, I think the letter should be sent to Governor Cuomo, asking for, uh, payment for all the pain and suffering of the people of Luzerne County, and also the bills that were incurred because of their residents, uh, shacking up in the southern end of Luzerne County. Uh, I think maybe the legislative committee might want to work with the, our state legislators on that letter, sending that out with a, with a bill attached to it. You know, if, if New York State, uh, the Governor Cuomo said, let's be a good neighbor and dump, uh, the residents on to our state, well, if he's such a good neighbor, then he'll be paying for their, uh, their expenses. And Mr. Mr. Chairman and Mr. Manager, I'm going to give, I'm going to do something that I rarely do in this, uh, in, in council, in any meeting forum. I will give my word that if Governor Cuomo actually submits a payment covering the costs for these New York residents, I will never speak ill of New York State ever again, and you could hold me to my word on that.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public, please? Anyone else from the public, please?
Ron Matt?
Go ahead, Mr. Matt.
Uh, uh, just a thing that stood out to me about, um, with, uh, Manager Pedri, uh, addressing the pandemic opening update for the county, uh, the thing that stood out to me was the FAs, uh, 275, that was, that was really a, quite a lot of, uh, PFAs, and, uh, in the last meeting, we, we, uh, had, we had up the, the increase in suicide and overdoses that had been happening, and, and that in itself, um, I think that solidifies, uh, the need, uh, but we shot down that letter to Governor Wolf, uh, respect to expediting, uh, the Speedy NC to go green. I mean, that's something that should be stifled sooner than later, as far as, uh, getting, uh, people back in their normal, uh, life, uh, and that's, that's, that should really stand out for everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Hi, Jason Carr, Salersburg, Pennsylvania. I would just like to give, uh, Matt, thank you. I would just like to give, uh, an update to Manager Pedri, uh, Solicitor Procomo, and the council, uh, regarding the assessed values of a property being purchased out of a, um, Tax Clean Bureau. I, I've been able to poll 18 different tax clean bureaus, uh, throughout the state, north, south, east and west, and all 18 so far have been able to, uh, verify that they do follow the Pennsylvania, uh, Real Estate Act of 1947, which is also indicated on the documents provided for someone who does purchase a property out of the Tax Clean Bureau repository, uh, from Northeast Revenue. So, uh, on June 11th, I do expect a different answer from Luzerne County, but, uh, also I have been able to, uh, uh, collect the 200, approximately 250 people who have purchased properties out of the repository, uh, since 2016, and we've begun contacting them regarding, uh, how the county does assess values out of the property, excuse me, out of the repository. So I was wondering if, if there's, uh, any dissenting viewpoints, uh, around how Luzerne County, or why does Luzerne County, so far from who I've polled throughout the state, why does Luzerne County, why is Luzerne County the only county at this point, from what I can ascertain, um, not follow the law of Pennsylvania?
Anyone else from the public? No one else in the public? I don't believe so, I don't hear anyone else. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. McGinley, I'd like to say a couple of words real quick.
Mr. Urban, go ahead, please.
Uh, just wanted to, you know, say that my heart goes out to all businesses that are suffering at this point in time. Um, want to remind people that the, uh, basically the governor's edicts and orders are not laws. Um, they might be something that's an order, but an order is not technically a law. Uh, law is actually passed by the State House and the State Senate, and then, you know, is actually passed on to the governor for his signature, so we just want to be clear on that. Um, any business that, that basically decides to open is taking a risk, you know, possibly with their license, um, you know, really, those licenses are controlled by bureaucrats in, in, in the state, so, you know, you do take a risk if you open up a business, um, and hopefully, you know, law enforcement will be friendly to them, um, because everybody, including us, takes an oath on the PA Constitution, all the laws of this Commonwealth and the US Constitution, so, uh, let us be mindful of that, and then, um, to Mr. Pedri, I, I don't know if you have any connections to the Bureau of Labor and Industry. I know there's constituents, you know, within our county that are going six weeks without payment from the state. Um, you know, if they compress them for anything, along with maybe our, our state reps and state senators, i- i- you know, um, to see if they can't correct that system. I know it's archaic, uh, but we have people that, that haven't been paid in, in like, some cases like six weeks, maybe longer. Um, you know, there, there are people hurting out there that, that I'm very sensitive to that fact, and I think we need to do a better job as, as county leaders trying to push the state to, to get their act straightened out. Um, you know, it's the least we can do as elected officials here in Luzerne County. I know we're, we really don't have much power besides being able to ask them politely to, to, uh, fix their system so these people can get paid and, and live their lives in a little bit of peace of mind.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Walter? Well, go ahead, Kendra.
Kendra?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Walter?
Mr. Griffith, all favor? Aye.
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 In opposition to the abstentions? Thank you, be safe. We'll meet two weeks, uh, from this evening, 6:01.
Maybe in council chambers.
Uh, I don't think we'll be in council chambers for a long time, Mr. Griffith. If you measure that room out, I think you'd find out that social distancing is going to be a, a real obstacle with that room. Thank you.
Maybe we'll go to EMA.
Bye-bye.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.